And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Ben. Clerk of Consul Anne Forrest, would you please call the roll?
Councilman Gillig.
Here.
Councilwoman Yanantuno.
Here.
Councilman Jones.
Here.
Councilman Leopard.
Present.
Councilman Perkins.
Here.
Councilman Perry.
Present.
Councilwoman Boyle.
Here.
Let the record show that all seven members of the council were present. Do we have any petitions?
There are no petitions, Mr. President.
Everyone hopefully has had an opportunity to read the minutes from our regular committee, the whole meeting, as well as our special meeting, June fourteenth. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions? Without objection, the minutes will stand approved as presented. We're now under committee reports. Finance Committee, Councilman Gillig.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Law and Community Planning, Councilwoman Boyle.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Materials and Equipment, Councilman Jones.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Personnel and Labor Relations, Councilman Perry.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Recreation and Public Property, Councilman Perkins.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Street Sidewalks and Sewers, Councilman Leopard.
Thank you, Mr. President. Street Sidewalk and Sewer Committee meeting was held on Wednesday, June ninth, 2021 at 4:15 PM in the Hayes Committee Room. Tending were committee members Leopard, Dawn Yanantuno, Ken Jones, and Zach Perkins, along with Mayor Aaron Monz, City Administrator Dale Thornton, Law Director Brent Howard, City Engineer Matt Watson, and Public Works Superintendent Brandon Burner. Leopard called the meeting to order and announced that the purpose of the meeting was to discuss Mayor's request for legislation 21-11, 21-12, and 21-13. Request for legislation 21-11, River View Estate Sewer Replacement Project. Public Works Superintendent Burner reported that portions of the sanitary sewer in the River View Estate subdivision are past their useful life and require replacement or rehabilitation. Streets in this subdivision are Longfellow Drive, Gary, Gale, Glenwood, and areas that cross Ella Street. This area has concrete lines that continue to be compromised by sewer gases. There is hope that dollars can be saved by lining the current sewer or other techniques. The Street Sidewalk and Sewer Committee was made aware of this situation during a May 2021 committee meeting. Superintendent Burner reported that the design portion of the project will take two years, constructing the following three years. Mayor Monz and City Administrator Thornton stated that Superintendent Burner has been very proactive with this project. Law Director Howard and Superintendent Burner agreed on a timeline for requests for qualifications of a design engineer in agreeing that the funding will be included in the 2022 budget. Superintendent Burner would like to secure an engineer by the end of the year. Motion was introduced by Councilwoman Yanantuno and seconded by Councilman Perkins to authorize Law Director to prepare legislation seeking a design engineer for preparation and engineering and request for qualifications for this project. Motion was approved four to zero. Request for legislation 21-12, easement for detention basin at 60 Heritage Drive. City Engineer Watson informed the committee that a detention basin is required following an addition at Sunoco Products on Heritage Drive. The basin is required as part of the stormwater management program. The request is to obtain an easement for inspection and maintenance. Engineer Watson reported that inspection consists, but not limited to inlet and outlet areas of the basin, mowing, and removal of items that would reduce the capacity. Motion was made by Councilwoman Yanantuno and seconded by Councilman Jones to authorize Law Director to prepare legislation for an easement. Motion passed four to zero. Request for legislation 21-13, bid project to construct decorative stamped concrete sidewalks. Mayor Monz asked the committee to consider authorizing the city administrator to bid a project to construct decorative stamped concrete crosswalks at the intersections of Madison Street, East Market Street, and East Perry Street with South Washington. Engineer Watson informed us that there are only two certified installers in the state of Ohio. The only stamped concrete sidewalks, crosswalks, in Tiffin are Court Street and Jefferson Street at Markin and Perry. All others are stamped asphalt. Engineer Watson stated that the cost of stamped concrete is the same or less than asphalt. The cost to install concrete is much higher. The service life of concrete is much longer, but requires sealing and maintenance, and when the road's service life has expired, the crosswalk has not, as the roadway can be milled around the stamped concrete crosswalk. The estimated cost is $180,000. $120,000 will come from capital improvements, and $60,000 will come from the state highway fund. It is important to note that $0 will come from the road and bridge levy funds. Coordination between the City Engineers Department and ODOT will take place as paving will be conducted in this area. A motion was introduced by Councilman Perkins and seconded by Councilwoman Yanantuno to have the Law Director to prepare legislation authorizing the city administrator to seek bids for this project. The motion passed with a four to zero vote. With no further business, the meeting adjourned to 4:53 PM.
Are there any questions for Councilman Leopard? Thank you. Economic Development and Downtown Planning, Councilwoman Yanantuno.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a, we're going to have a special meeting next Monday, June 28th, at 6:00 PM. The purpose of the meeting is to discuss proposed changes to the city charter, along with the presence of the Charter Review Commission, and any other business may be considered for that night. I had a question. Are we going to need to have another meeting for the agreement?
Yeah, probably two more meetings. So you could include, you're talking about 21-55, which involves the riverfront project. You need to have two more meetings after this meeting to read the legislation. You could include that in next Monday, on the 28th, if you would like, but then I would suggest that you amend your notice and provide new notices of that special meeting if it's going to specifically include that item, or you could have it at two other nights. It's up to council's pleasure.
You feel, how do you feel about more meetings in two?
Does the, and the final meeting has to take place before the 30th? Is that correct?
Should.
Okay.
Right, because the current contract has dates that would indicate it expires at the end of this month.
So we almost need to do one between now and next Monday, too?
Or the day or two after that. You know, you have 30 days in June.
Right, okay.
Councilman Perry.
I think we owe it to this, for this to be read three times. So I would be in support of, you know, doing two more readings, adding it to next week's agenda, and then finding another time that we all can meet, that we can, you know, read it a third time and vote on it.
Okay. Then, so we'd have, we'd have the 29th and the 30th meet.
Or one meeting this week.
Yeah, one meeting this week.
Mr. President, would it probably be better to have the second meeting at the charter once we're not holding up their meeting specifically, and have the third one after? Would be my suggestion.
I'd agree.
So the 29th or 30th for the third meeting, don't put it this week, so that this way it's separate from the charter review?
Okay.
Yeah, the final reading, yeah.
Councilwoman Boyle.
Yeah, well, I guess I see what you're saying. I just, I feel like we're cramming that into a very short period of time. We're having, so you're saying, Dawn, you're saying have the meeting, the third meeting, on the 29th or 30th, and have the second meeting at some point this week?
The 28th.
Twenty eighth.
With the charter review, since we're already meeting.
Right.
But if we do the final meeting on the 28th, it could get to be a very, very long meeting with the final reading for that and charter review. We know the mayor likes those long meetings, but...
Well, I would, I would suggest that we include this in our meeting on the 28th, and then 29th or 30th, whatever. Councilman Leopard.
There's an outside possibility that I may not be able to attend the 29th or 30th.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of my issue as well. I have an amendment, I cannot, on the 29th and 30th evening. However, I do agree with Councilman Perry's notice of, that we do, or mention that we do, we should, you know, try to read this three times and follow the appropriate process to give, to give people the appropriate time.
Who else has a problem with 29th or 30th?
Only in the evening, or what could you do morning?
Did morning, I'd be fine. Anytime before three.
I could do very early in the morning.
I wouldn't be available for morning, yeah. I wouldn't be available for morning. Unless it was like six in the morning.
I'll be myself in Findlay at 11:15 on the 28th. Oh, I'm sorry, 28th, nevermind. Scratch that.
Is there a poss-
Councilman.
Is there a possibility we could do a Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday of this week?
I won't be here Thursday, but you guys can get along.
I can make this week work, for sure.
Make Wednesday work?
Okay.
It puts the third reading back on, Monday.
Gotta do what you gotta do.
Yeah, but then I agree with, I agree with Councilwoman Yanantuno. You're gonna, you know, we're cramming this in with the charter.
Right.
It'll be a long meeting. Councilman Perry.
If it's up to the charter, could we push that meeting back, or, I mean, is that not...
It's like herding cats. You're trying to get, you're trying to get almost twice as many people's schedule readjusted that isn't on council. I really don't think that's an option to move the council or the term. They've had that meeting on their schedule for about months now. Yeah.
Just say we're doing both that night, though.
I don't, I think that's where to go.
Yeah, I'm in agreement.
Councilman Gillig.
Thank you, Mr. President. You good folks may think me mad, but do we want to look into two special meetings this week to discuss the riverfront project? Because I, I mean, I really think we need to make sure we're giving the charter review process their due and not trying to rush them through anything.
I can make this week work, however I need to.
I'm on vacation, so I can do whatever.
Like I said, the only day I can't is Thursday, so...
I mean, we could do one Wednesday evening, this Wednesday.
Imagine that one would be very short.
Right.
Yeah, should be.
I don't know how everybody feels about that.
All right. So Wednesday, and what's the third date?
So are you saying it would have to be that Friday, then, is what you're saying, Rich?
Mr. President.
Huh? Go ahead, Councilman.
What would be the, I mean, I feel like we're not really following the true intent of the three reading rule, trying to cram them all in one week, honestly. I don't know if, I mean, what was the purpose of the three reading rule? I mean, to give people enough time to process it? And I guess I would ask Brett.
Yeah, the, it's just what you said, so that there's ample notice for the public about the business of council, and giving them an opportunity to come to council meetings and speak on issues if they wish. The legal requirement is a 24-hour, 24-hour notice in advance. So you could schedule them in three consecutive days theoretically, but you raise a good point. Does that somehow circumvent the whole purpose of three readings to allow ample public knowledge and input?
Councilman Leopard.
And three readings are required since it involves the sale of city property? Is that correct?
Correct.
Either way we look at it, either way we look at it, we're gonna cram two meetings in one week, whether it be this week or next week.
Yeah, okay. Well, Wednesday's good with everybody, this Wednesday. All right, then...
Time, time.
Six o'clock. Or we want to do it before that?
I'd rather do it before that, myself.
I would, yeah.
Anytime after four.
Four o'clock?
Four o'clock.
Yes, I can make that work, yep.
Can we do 4:30 to be safe?
4:30?
Yeah, fours are like pushing it, my meeting.
All right. So Wednesday, 4:30, and then how about the second date?
28th, oh.
Do it, I think we should look at it separately. What, you're not gonna be here on Tuesday, you're not be, your 29th?
It's possible that I may not be the 29th or the 30th.
You know by our next meeting on Wednesday?
Probably won't know.
Okay. Could you schedule two special meetings on the 28th and do this one earlier, before charter review? And I know it's gonna make for a long day for all of us, but meet it on the 28th. I don't know what time you're all available. Could you do three or four, something like that?
There you go. How would, how would four o'clock on the 28th be?
I can do that.
Okay, all right. Four o'clock. All right. So I'm going to announce a special meeting for Wednesday, the 23rd of June, at 4:30, for the purpose of discussing the agreement with the city of Tiffin and the riverfront project, and any other business that might come before the council. And then also, I'm going to announce a special meeting for Monday, June 28th, at four o'clock, for the purpose of discussing the city's agreement with the development of the riverfront property. I guess that's what we're calling it, right?
Yeah, are you asking folks to bring their sleeping bags that night?
No, we, we just won't call on anybody. Okay.
It's gonna be a slow two hours. It'll be a slow two hours.
I'd also like to announce a public hearing to be held on July 6th, at seven o'clock. The purpose of it would be the adoption of the 2021 budget and authorizing the finance director to deliver the budget to the Seneca County Auditor. I think that, I think that does it. Okay. All right. We'll move on to reports of the officers. His honor, Mayor Aaron D. Monz.
Thank you, Mr. President. I guarantee my report this evening will not be three and a half hours like last week's report during our meeting, nor will I go out and throw a baseball out for a first pitch and come back and finish the meeting tonight. So no first this evening. I do have a proclamation tonight, Mayor's proclamation for the city of Tiffin, Ohio, and it states, "Whereas post-traumatic stress disorder, PTSD, can occur after a person experiences trauma, including, but not limited to, the stress of combat, rape, sexual assault, child abuse, bombings, accidents, and natural disasters, and affects approximately eight million adults in the United States annually. Whereas PTSD is associated with chemical changes in the body's hormonal system, an automatic nervous system, and is characterized by symptoms including flashbacks, nightmares, insomnia, avoidance, hypervigilance, anxiety, and depression. Whereas the brave men and women of the United States Armed Forces who proudly serve the nation and risk their lives to protect our freedom deserve the investment of every possible resource to ensure their lasting physical, mental, and emotional well-being. And whereas combat-related PTSD stress among our men and women in the armed forces is significantly pronounced, given that they are often exposed to highly traumatic events for weeks, months, and even years. And whereas, between 10% and 30% of service members will develop PTSD within a year of leaving combat, while others may not develop symptoms until years later. And whereas, despite its treatability, many cases of PTSD remain undiagnosed and untreated due to the lack of awareness of this condition and the persistent stigma associated with mental health conditions. Whereas, raising awareness of this condition is necessary to remove the stigma and to encourage those suffering to seek proper and timely treatment that may save their lives. And whereas, all citizens suffering from PTSD deserve our consideration, and those who are affected by PTSD from wounds received while protecting our freedom deserved out of respect, deserve our respect and honor. Now therefore, be it resolved, I, Aaron D. Monz, Mayor of the city of Tiffin, Ohio, do hereby declare that June 27th, 2021, is designated as Posttraumatic Stress Disorder Day to bring awareness to our veterans with, and others with PTSD, and to encourage people to reach out to their fellow citizens to provide support and to remove the stigma associated with this disorder. This is done under my hand this 27th day of June in the year of our Lord 2021. You know, I always go back to Jim Roberts. He was the one that inspired that, talking to him about how when the soldiers would come back in his time, it was just called shell shocked. And, and, you know, to hear some of the stories that Jim would share about his fellow soldiers coming back and the mental wounds that they bore, and just the lack of understanding, I, every year now, reissue this to kind of, as a way to also remember Jim, not necessarily him saying that he had that, but just a lot of his soldiers that he served with took at home with them and never were the same after returning from combat, whether it was World War II, Korean War, Vietnam, or the more recent conflicts. So I try to remember each year to do that, kind of also in Jim's memory, since he helped inspire it, but it really is something that we need to pay more attention to, and just mental health in general in this country. We, we, we need to quit using the terms, they just need to get over it, or this and that, because mental health is a real and serious issue. And, you know, it's amazing how someone has, has cancer or heart disease or something, and we've got a massive benefit for them, but someone suffering from a severe issue like PTSD or other mental health, and everyone kind of turns a blind eye. And I think we need to try to bring awareness to that and do a better job of treating everyone as that being a disease versus it just being someone not, you know, owning up to the issues that they've had. So like to do that each year and try to bring additional awareness to PTSD. I would like to wish all of the fathers in the room a happy belated Father's Day. Yep, hopefully all of you are able to celebrate in that ridiculous heat and humidity yesterday. A quick financial update, we're almost to the, or we're almost into July, where numbers will finally line up. This year, we all know, because of last year with the changes on the income tax reporting date, and then they were changed again this year, so income taxes were not due last year until July 15th. This year, income taxes were not due until May 15th, so it's completely skewed the numbers from typical. So for the month of June so far, we are ahead of June 2020 numbers by $170,000, which at this point is just a hair under 25% increase. As far as our comparison to last year, we are $932,000 ahead of where we were at this point last year. But remember, the bottom will fall out in July, because we are going to have a normals year collection in July, and we're not going to have that big amount that we saw pour in last year. So at this point, there's hundreds of thousands of dollars that will be into the negative next month. To put things into perspective, at the end of June 2019, we're ahead of where we were by, at that point in 2019, by $273,000. So we're up 5% approximately to where we were in 2019 at this time. So while we get excited and looking that we're up almost 20% this year to last year, you've got to take into account we're going to see a big deficit in the month of July. But overall, comparatively speaking to 2019, our last regular year, we are ahead by 5% of 2019 numbers. It was interesting that it works out that we are $273,273 ahead. So the numbers repeat themselves, so I don't know if that's a sign or what. But still, very good overall, as income taxes continue to come in. And once we get to the end of July, I think we'll have a very clear picture of exactly where we are financially this year compared to the last few years. We are pleased to report that we did finish the note reissuance for Progress Parkway, the street project out near the Willows and across from Mercy Hospital. That is a $3.155 million note. We're pleased to report we had a 1% coupon on that, so the interest rate, 1%, very good numbers. numbers. This is likely the last year that we will do the one-year note. We're very likely going to roll this into a long-term bond next year, which is a much more labor-intensive process for the administration and for Kathy. We've tried to roll this over, hoping there would be development on that site, but any leads that we had dried up, of course, when coronavirus pandemic hit, and still restaurants and retail and even the medical industry is just kind of in a holding pattern, not doing a whole lot of new development. So we're hopeful that things will take off on that site, but we can't continue to roll this note over, because if we wait too long, interest rates are eventually going to go up, and we're going to get stuck with a lot higher long-term rates. So we'll probably look at doing a long-term bond on this next year, but we're still extremely happy with the 1% coupon on that. Quiet Zone update, it's done. We are very excited, the Quiet Zone is completed. It becomes official on the first of July. However, as we've noted, some trains have already come through town and not sounded the horns. I was standing out at Tiffin University last week, and one rolled through, not a single horn blast, so they are starting already. The Ohio Rail Development Commission did let us know that it can take months, if not a year, before you, before the train operators are fully trained and realize what they're doing. Apparently, they have some system that warns them in the train, but they said some of the folks that travel the same route day after day, that it's just muscle memory, is they see a marker or something, they know to start sounding the horn. But it is excited to see this completed, is as you recall, somewhere in the neighborhood of less than 10% of the entire project was used out of local tax dollars, a lot of the money coming from the universities, the Ohio Rail Development Commission, the Pruena Foundation, Tiffin Community put in money, as well as CSX and other sources. So the majority of the money actually on this project wasn't even tax dollars, it was from private sources. So just a really good project to see wrapped up. The crossings are all safer, and the train horns will end. I kid you not, we've probably had, I don't know, multiple calls and emails every week with people asking when this is going to begin. So I think there's a lot of fanfare in the public, they're excited, especially those that live or are working right on top of railroad tracks to not have to deal with those horn blasts, which if you recall, we average one every three minutes in Tiffin, based off of the number of trains that come through here. I will be at the next council meeting recommending the creation of a public art policy and commission for the city. We are receiving more and more requests for people to do public art, public art ranging from a wide variety of things. None of us at the city feel quite comfortable enough that we should be the ones deciding what kind of art, where it should go, because we're just not artistic enough, so we would like to create a commission similar to what the Architectural Board of Review and other boards the city has, and that they could actually be made up of members of the art community and the Downtown Committee, so that they can take a look at various requests that we are getting. There are a few already pending, so we'd like to get this moving along. So at the next meeting, I think we'll have everything ready to go to make that recommendation to council, and then you all can decide from there if you wish to send it to a committee or do committee the whole. Amy Reinhart and the Downtown Design Committee with TSEP have put a lot of work into it. They've actually visited, I don't know how many communities, they've, they've talked with a lot of communities that have these public art commissions, and it's really seems like it's the way to go. That way, the decision-maker is not the mayor or the city administrator just unilaterally issuing a permit because they like this art, don't like that art, it's an actual commission with a set group of rules and regulations, similar to how the ABR functions, so that hopefully it puts us in a position that we can allow public art, but at the same time, we're just not arbitrarily deciding what is good and what is bad. So we're going to take a stab at that and at least get the process started, and I'm sure, just like the Architectural Board of Review has been over the years, we'll have to make changes as it gets up and running and goes forward. So look forward to that coming at the next council meeting on July the sixth. We already talked in committee the whole, bird scooters launched today. I know they've got, they're gonna have about 25 of them to start, in hopes that they'll grow to a fleet of at or near 100 in the future if it goes over well. There have been questions already at the city. No legislation was required. The scooters are allowed under Ohio Revised Code, so we did not have to pass any regulation or do anything here locally. So the scooter, that's how the scooters are out there. I know, I had someone already call and ask why we didn't allow golf carts, Councilman Leopard. They asked why we didn't allow golf carts, but we're allowing scooters, and the reason is because golf carts are not expressly permitted unless we permit them on, based off Ohio law where as the scooters are. So take that up, I guess, with Mr. Reinicki and Mr. Click, our state senator and state rep, because that's where it would have to start, unless we were to take additional action locally. But we are excited for the scooters, I think they're going to be used heavily, and just provides another mobility option, and Toledo News was down, and he was talking about how cool it is, because they really don't have these even in Toledo right now. So he thought it was really neat and was going to take a spin. I didn't hear back from him, so hopefully he didn't injure himself. I do want to let council know, especially Councilwoman Yanatuno, that if it's not completed, it's near completion, the retention pond at the mall.
It looks really, really good.
Good.
I am so happy.
So it's amazing how when you, when you send the final notice that they're going to be cited, how quick action happens, right? Also, David Zack, I think he's somewhere in the crowd, he gave us a little bit of help with that, and, and the mall, if it is not 100% into compliance, it will be here in the near future. It sounds like if it's not, it's close, because you've seen it. So we're just happy to finally have that retention pond fully brought into compliance.
What they've done so far is absolutely astounding.
Good, good.
It looks really good.
That's what we want to hear. Good.
Thank you.
Yes. I want to congratulate Lieutenant Aaron Russell on his retirement. He's been a little over 25 years, starting in 1995 with the Tiffin Police Department. Lieutenant Russell has retired and is going into the private sector in his retirement, because we all know, those of you that know Aaron, he, he doesn't like to stay bored for very long, he's always got to keep busy, so congratulations to Aaron on his retirement. We had a great turnout for the Paul Elker Jr. Memorial Dedication, thanks to several of you on council who showed up to that. Huge turnout, there had to have been 250, 300 people there, the park was packed to remember Paul. The family, of course, came up with the funds to create the memorial, and then we actually, the flagpole is a, is just like in front of City Hall, it's actually refurbished old light posts that held up lights at one of the ballfields in the community, that parks sanded down, got it all repainted, and just like the one outside of City Hall, it's actually stronger than most flagpoles that you can purchase out there, they sunk it into the ground, it looks absolutely great. And we moved the stone where we named the trail, because if you all recall, those of you that were at that ceremony, Paul was the, of course, Paul being Paul, the only thing he was concerned about were that people were going to fall over his stone that named the trail after him. So we moved it to a location now by the bench to where no one should hopefully fall over Paul's stone out there, but just very happy with the turnout and how everything worked out with the Paul Elker dedication. I want to remind everyone, TSEP did launch a downtown survey, it's tiffensurvey.com, asking for feedback on what you would like to see downtown, especially business-related, so we encourage members of the public, people that live in Tiffin, visit Tiffin, work in Tiffin, council members, et cetera, please go to tiffensurvey.com, fill that survey out. And then I just want to let everyone know, we did begin running the ad for the new chief of police. We were told that we were the third-most clicked ad on the Ohio Police Chiefs Association that's doing the hiring website, so I think that's good to know. And that was total ads that they are running on there, so it sounds like we're getting good feedback, we've already had a few applications submitted. That will run through July 30th for applicants, and then we'll start the assessment center process and hopefully have the, the new chief in place by as early as probably middle of October to as late as middle of November, just depending on how, whomever is hired, how much time he or she needs to give notice, if they're working somewhere else, et cetera. But we're excited to get that moving forward. And then, of course, I know I brought it up in committee the whole, but I urge you all please to spend and pass the ordinance tonight to make Rob Chapel official. We've got him here, I know we're working to get his swearing in scheduled, so if we don't pass it tonight, we're gonna have to reschedule all of that. So I would just urge council to pass that. Rob has done a phenomenal job in his eight-plus months, and I guarantee you, we're not going to find someone else better out there. So alls we're going to do is spend about $10,000 and waste it to know that we're going to get someone of Rob's character and leadership here at the city. So I urge you to approve things tonight so that Rob becomes official, and I can quit calling him interim chief. And then I just want to remind everybody about events coming up. This coming Thursday, the 24th, at 4:00 PM, is the ribbon cutting for Lox by Cactus, that is the new hair salon on Court Street, so June 24th, Thursday, 4:00 PM. The first concert of the East Green Summer Concert Series kicks off Saturday, the 26th, this coming Saturday, 8:00 PM. The Lost State of Franklin is the band that is playing. Really hoping to have that place packed, since we weren't able to do much of anything fun last year, I have a feeling we're going to see a phenomenal crowd, so we're very excited for the first concert of the East Green Summer Concert Series this coming Saturday, 26th, at 8:00 PM. The Pink Lady and Renaissance on Wheels is having a one-year anniversary ribbon cutting and open house on the first of July, that starts at 5:00 PM, I think they're going to cut the ribbon around 5:30. So please come out and congratulate them on one year. If you're able to start a business in the middle of the pandemic and survive a whole year, I think you got something good going, so congratulation to, to Dave and his team on those business ventures. And then coming up, Thursday nights in the month of July, the Parks Department is putting on what they're calling Thursday Night Tunes at the East Green. So Thursday evening, starting July 1st, there will be bands playing at the East Green, the first one, July 1st, 7:00 PM, called the Tuesday Crowd, they're playing on a Thursday, so don't confuse that, but the Tuesday Crowd is playing on Thursday, the 1st of July, 7:00 PM. And then just to remind everyone, our big Independence Day celebration, we've got food trucks coming out at the park, the pool's open, just a lot of fun, band starting at, I believe, it's either five or six o'clock on Independence Day, and then the biggest fireworks display that we've ever had in the community that will start at approximately 10:00 PM. Heaven forbid if there's rain, we will do the fireworks the next day on the 5th of July. And then City Hall's closed on the 5th for Independence Day. That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for the mayor? Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mayor, I get accused of not listening, but I thought you said the train whistles were effective July the 1st.
Yeah.
If the engineers are doing it ahead of time, is that not good, or we can't control that?
I don't think so, because the notice that we sent in stated that we requested it start July 1st. So if the, the Federal Rail Authority, if they've received it, they can start it anytime they want. We just had to select a date, so we put the 1st of July. So that's what I would assume that they're doing, is that they've already gotten notice that it's coming up, and they've just done it.
Well, we wish Lieutenant Russell the best, too. I didn't realize he was that old.
We'll see if he's watching the meeting tonight.
Hate to see him leave, so if you're watching, Lieutenant Russell.
He's retired, he can speak freely now.
Well, we wish him the best. Clerk of Council, Ann Forrest.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Director of Finance, Kathy Kaufman.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Director of Law, Brent T. Howard.
Yes, thank you, just a couple items. Follow-up with the mayor's report on the bird scooters, the question came up about the hours, and the hours are 4:00 AM to midnight, so there's about a four-hour, you know, middle of the night shutdown, so you can take them to work early in the morning and just, gotta give them, or you can ditch them by midnight. And then also, the second item I have is ordinance 21-55, that's the ordinance that you'll read for the first time tonight about the Riverfront Project. I had prepared that document, and I made a mistake in that, I noted today, and Steve Leopard, Councilman Leopard noted the law on this, is that the Tiffin Charter does not allow for a suspension of three reading rule and the emergency for any legislation that authorizes the sale of real property. So you should, if you want to pass that legislation, you could go ahead on at three, read it at three separate times. It will, though, become effective 30 days from passage and signature by the mayor. I don't expect that that would be an issue, it'll just, that will be the effective date that the mayor will be able to sign it. The action the council should take should take place prior to the end of this month. So there is an emergency clause, but you cannot declare it an emergency, so you cannot vote on that, it would be ineffective if you did, okay? And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions for the law director? Councilman Leopard?
Thank you. Where is it legal to ride a scooter? On the street, on the sidewalk?
Both, yes.
I didn't realize that sidewalks would be a proper place, but, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, we're now under written communications.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have Finance Director's Request for Legislation Number F-21-21, to approve the return of the advance from the Jefferson Streetscape Fund to the General Fund in the amount of
Finance Director's Request for Legislation F-21-21 will be held on file in the clerk's office. Ordinance 21-54 has been prepared for tonight's meeting.
And Finance Director's Request for Legislation Number F-21-22, to amend the 2021 Budget Ordinance 21-11, to appropriate a $23,194.60 transfer from General Fund to the Fair Lane U.S. Route 224 Market Street Fund.
Finance Director's Request for Legislation F-21-22 will be held on file in the clerk's office. Ordinance 21-56 has been prepared for tonight's meeting.
And we have mayor's letters of appreciation to Lisa Swickert for serving on the Architectural Board of Review since 2019, as well as to Mr. and Mrs. Gary Meadows Jr. for their donation to the Parks and Recreation Department.
These letters will be held on file in the clerk's office.
That concludes your written communications.
Thank you. We're now under oral communications, anyone from the attending public who wishes to address council, please step to the podium, tell us who you are, sign in, address your comments to the President of City Council, and I would ask that each of you limit your comments to five minutes.
Jeff Weber, Lakewood, Ohio, and I, along with my partners, own the former Gibson Hotel at 160, 162, and 164, South Washington. Thank you, Council President, council members, mayor, law director. Appreciate the opportunity to come and speak this evening. I come before you today to talk about our planned boutique hotel, because I understand that you are making a change to a contract that impacts my hotel, my planned hotel in a big way. So I'd like to talk to you a little bit about the hotel to bring you up to speed with the amount of progress that we've made in the last year and a half, two years. Some of you may have heard about the project, but we haven't done a lot to promote it, and that's by intention. The original building that we own was erected as a Pratt Hotel in 1884. It changed ownership over the years, but it ran continuously as a hotel until the 1950s, when it was then converted to a boarding house. The rooms on the second floor, third floor, and fourth floor are, for all intents and purposes, the same as they were back then, although in disrepair. We discovered the building on a weekend trip in the fall of 2018, when we came to town to visit a friend who was working in Tiffin at the time, and who's now a partner in this project. After a fabulous meal at the Empire Restaurant, we walked back to his apartment where we were staying. On the walk, we discovered a mostly empty building, and were surprised to learn that it was for sale. Our love of old buildings, my wife's very successful interior design business, and our penchant for staying in high-end boutique hotels when we traveled, and the lack of boutique hotel to stay in town, we got very excited about it, especially since there were two universities in town, which bring people in and out on a regular basis. So the next day, we called, and we began to, we began to immediately negotiate with the owners of the building. During the ensuing year, we hired a national firm, HBS, out of Denver, to conduct a national feasibility study, which they did. We hired Gibbon Architecture in Shaker Heights to develop some initial drawings and to lay out the building to accommodate modern room configurations and requirements. We engaged the services of a hotel operating company, Century Hotel Group out of Dayton, and they prepared an operating pro forma for us. These are the folks that will operate the hotel once it's open. And they currently operate several hotels in southern, southwestern part of Ohio, and are excited to come up a little bit further north. are excited to come up a little bit further north. In this pro forma, they've got everything from the payroll that's going to be required to run it, all the way down to the cost of the sundries, complimentary sundries. We spoke with David Zach and Amy Reinhardt at TSEP, and we had lunch with the mayor. Feeling confident about the project, we bought the building for cash in 2019. Between September 2019 and May of 2020, we, along with Gibbon Architecture, engaged the services of WHS Engineering in Cleveland, ILA Structure Engineers in Cleveland, and Van Horn Hoover Civil Engineers in Findlay. Together, this team designed an incredible plan for the hotel, which includes, and I'm not going to spend any time doing this, but I want you to know that there are architectural drawings that have been done and are ready to go. We have 26 rooms, including nine junior king suites, eight standard king suites, two queen suites, two standard queen seats, and two penthouse king suites with walkout terraces. There's a first-floor breakfast area, a lobby bar under a restored skylight, and an adjoining retail shop. There's also a stunning three-story, original floating staircase that will be fully restored. We engaged the services of the Historic Preservation Group out of Cleveland. And in May 2020, they filed on our behalf for historic tax credits with the U.S. Department of Interior, National Park Service, and the Ohio State Preservation Office. In August 2020, we received a little over $1 million in state and federal tax credits. We've got a press release that I was going to show, but it was announced. With this seed money and our owner equity in place, between October of 2020 and March of 2021, we solicited and received construction bids from the following six Ohio companies: April Company in Cleveland, Klaus Construction here in Tiffin, Marker Inc. in Bellefontaine, North Shore Construction in Cincinnati, Helms Construction in Findlay, and JGG Construction in Cleveland. In March this year, our financing advisor, MCM, out of Cleveland, contacted several Northwest Ohio banks, who all expressed an interest in our project. For some time now, we've been silently monitoring the progress of the mega development, which has been on City Council's agendas. When key dates were not met, we continued to invest our time and money into the project, optimistic that the other one was still in its infancy and might not happen as configured. However, due to COVID, City Council granted its first extension. So we continued to monitor the situation and still continued with our plans to open the hotel. We were further encouraged when MCM and Century Hotel Group reported that the lenders that they speak with on a regular basis all said multifamily housing was being financed aggressively during COVID, while hotel financing was being examined closely. To us, this seemed to open the door for us. We thought the other project might consider eliminating the hotel and focus on the housing portion. We were encouraged that our project would be viewed positively because we had, one, an existing building, two, significance funds from the tax credits, and, three, a large chunk of owner equity from our partners. We have been told that these factors meant our construction loan would be viewed, most likely, very favorably. Everything was progressing nicely until last week, when the developer requested an additional extension. And it became apparent from the meeting that that was going to be granted to him. We understand that. But we now ask you to consider amending the hotel extension or consider not even granting it. I laid out the details and the timing of our progress to illustrate how, despite the frustrations of COVID, we continue to aggressively pursue our plan to restore the Gibson Hotel into a high-end boutique hotel. We were able to make significant progress during the March 2020 to June 2021 COVID timetable, which brings us to today. With our construction bids in hand, we are ready to put the final financing piece into place. However, we have serious reservations about a competing hotel in the downtown area. Quite frankly, while Tiffin is attractive to us and is able to support one downtown hotel, the city is not likely to be able to support two hotels with the occupancy rates sufficient to allow both hotels to operate profitably. During your special meeting last week, we all heard much talk about what's been done on the other project and how COVID has affected its timetable. But to me, there seems to be little tangible proof that anything substantial has been accomplished. By council granting the additional extensions, especially on the hotel portion, it will critically impact our desire to move forward on our plan, which is virtually, at this point, shovel-ready. So we're at a crossroads. Do we build, or do we relinquish our historic tax credits and abandon our project? We don't want to wait another year to determine whether or not the other hotel is going to be built. We ask you to consider amending your extension on the hotel portion of the project to be far more restrictive than it's currently planned. I'm happy, at some point outside the meeting, to share all of our plans and all of our documents. I realize it's beyond the purview of this meeting to do that, but I appreciated the opportunity to come and explain what we have done and how excited we are about joining the historic downtown Tiffin.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Weber? Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Weber, were you here at our meeting last Monday, or why would you wait a week to come to us?
I viewed the, I was unaware that there was a special meeting.
Okay.
I viewed it through the satellite. I mean, I sat and watched the full three and a half hours.
Okay.
Including the mayor leaving to go pitching.
Can I ask if it's appropriate, what are you looking at at development costs for this project?
Well, the development cost is, total development cost is $8.119 million.
Significant number.
It is a significant number.
How soon had you planned to start renovation?
Well, we had already planned to start, but, I mean, COVID did cause some delays, and so we are behind the schedule that way. And then we were watching this other, because these key dates that you set out, we believed in. And when extensions are granted, it changes things. And so we, if, look, if the other building is going to go up and it's going to include a hotel, we have to seriously look at that, because I don't think we're going to generate. It's a different concept. It's not a 50-room hotel. It's not a bad hotel. It's a high-end boutique hotel. And so, but we still have to look at occupancy rates. And I know it was told in the meeting that 75% is a conservative but doable occupancy rate. That's pretty much what you need to run profitably a hotel. So we have to look at that and say, look, do we really want to come to Tiffin to make that sort of investment and then jeopardize being able to run it profitably afterwards? So that's why it's been delayed. I mean, because we're sitting here watching, and we want to know, are we going to build with confidence? Are we going to build in doubt? Or are we not going to build at all?
Councilman Perry.
I just have one question. You guys bought the building after the plans were announced, right? After, like, the hotel was announced?
I'm not sure when, no, it happened right about the same time. We bought the building in September 2019, but we first started negotiating on the building in November of 2018.
2018, yes, correct. And was the, when was the Riverwalk project? That was before I was on council, was that?
2018.
2018. So I guess, were you, were you buying the building hoping the other one would go down? Or, I mean, that was already in place, or?
Well, we bought the building and we put the plans in. It was almost simultaneous that these two projects were coming together, and then we continued to monitor it. And along the way, if we would have seen that there were tangible things that were happening, we might have pulled the plug a lot sooner. But when we weren't seeing that, we were optimistic that we should keep on going. So, and that's what we did.
Is there a time limit on the tax credits?
We are going to be under an op will. We've been told that on July, the first Monday after July 4th, we're going to receive a letter, and they're going to ask us for an op. But we've also been told that because of COVID and some of the effects of getting construction started and all those sorts of things, we're likely to be given some leeway in that. So there isn't really a timeframe that, you know, but they are going to be looking for us to have made significant progress on the project, which we believe we can show.
Well, appreciate your time, Mr. Weber. Thank you very much, and appreciate your interest in the community, and hopefully we can keep moving ahead.
I hope to see much more of you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
And I'm kind of glad that the mayor read the proclamation, because that gives me a chance to read a little something here, too. I just wanted to reiterate or just kind of read, some of you have been on council for a little while, and some of you are new to council. But going back, you know, probably 15 years ago, the original ten of downtown of Tiffin tomorrow was to revitalize and regenerate the downtown, and through restoring of existing buildings and creating opportunities for small businesses to thrive. And that was kind of what was started with Tiffin tomorrow. And we did that by, like the mayor said, and like he's done, visiting other communities to see what they did to be successful and trying to get some ideas from them. The city came up with grant money that downtown building owners could use to redo their buildings and make it nice and attractive for people to want to be here. The other thing that we tried to do is we tried to create some events for people to come downtown. The Jazz Festival, which we did for a few years, and other things, like the Chocolate Walk, and just to try to get people downtown and give, here again, to create business for the small businesses that are located down here. And we all want to see enhancements. We all want to see growth. But a concern that I have is, you have to be careful, and as leaders, you have to make sure that the growth doesn't come at the detriment of those businesses that have already invested in the community. So for what it's worth, you really have to kind of be careful with, when you look at growth, that it doesn't hurt those small businesses that have already invested in it and have invested here for a long time. So that was all. Thank you. Appreciate it. And thank you all for the time and the effort you put into to lead Tiffin.
Thanks, Mitch.
A few things that I want to add and clarify from last week's meeting, and then I want to add some perspective and some additional, I guess, information, because I've known, not for a long time, but I've known from the early days when Jeff Weber and the other partners, one of whom was, lived in Tiffin and had a prominent position here, a little bit more about the project. And I am fully supportive of that, and, by the way, have asked whether they would like any additional investment, and have had some activity in reviewing the business plan. And I'll tell you that I am all in for a number of reasons. It fits with what you and we are doing in Tiffin. Tiffin is a small market, but a beautiful market that has resurrected itself through Tiffin Tomorrow, Mitch Felton, and a whole number of other leaders. That has grown to a dynamite organization called TSEP. And what's behind that? Sure, you're going to see some announcements from TSEP about, geez, you know, number four or five or two or whatever on site magazine. And, you know, you want to publish some positive press releases, but that's not what's really going on. What's going on is organically, various people in the community are rebuilding this town. I think it goes more than downtown, but clearly downtown. The Main Street program that just was initiated in, was it '14 or '15, but not that long ago, has had terrific opportunity and terrific accomplishments in a relatively short time. I mean, the fabric of downtown is historic. It is Washington Street. And what has happened over the years in Tiffin? How many of you grew up here? Do you remember? Now, I'm going to catch a couple of you. Do you remember the '60s?
Yes.
Little leopard.
I was a little young in the '50s. I was born in the '50s, where downtown was still vibrant. '60s had changed. Why? Westgate was built. I'm not saying that's wrong, but I'm saying that it happened. And I'm saying that we are, then and now, still a small market. Basically, Westgate killed, for all practical purposes, downtown, other than a few leftover shops, but plenty of empty storefronts. What happened to Westgate? The Tiffin Mall ended up burying Westgate or putting it into sort of a critical state, right? Wasn't really room for both of them. How's the Tiffin Mall doing today? It's a shell. What's it been, you know, attacked by? Well, Walmart and a trend for out parcel. The point being, in a small market, and a TSEP committee studied this last year, sort of March through June at this time, about what goes on in county seats and peer communities like us. What are those other Main Street communities doing? How are they handling development? They all want to, you know, grow and be vibrant, but they don't kid themselves. You don't just overnight double your population, put up mega projects. In fact, what we learned was that most all successful development happened more organically with people that were somewhere either in the community or connected to it, and not, you know, outside development that, geez, let's come in and do a big project. I really believe that our continuing strength is projects like the hotel, the Gibson Hotel. What's it do? First of all, it takes a empty building that is not very attractive. Well, I consider it attractive, because I like little things, and I see potential. But, you know, it's a scar on downtown. Bringing a viable business in there and a concept that we need, we do need more hotel rooms. And I would argue a little bit with Jeff that it's not high-end boutique. I mean, you know, we've all been to a few, you know, metropolitan markets. I mean, this is boutique in a Tiffin style. I mean, the room rates are not going to be, you know, 200 to 300 hours a night, but it's going to be, you know, classy for, you know, this market, for sure. A great addition, and it's to scale. I don't know the right number of new hotel rooms. I mean, I wouldn't be surprised if Hampton at some point would do an addition, or somebody else of that vein would come in, in the 224 sort of, you know, strip area. But terrific to have some, you know, within two years, something opening up that is incremental and downtown that accomplishes multiple achievements that are all part of our agenda. The revival of downtown, a great Main Street community. The revival of downtown, a great Main Street community, and not crowding out downtown businesses, which is sort of what we fear is going to happen. Like Mitch has said, that geez, you know, you build too big, you know, it's going to, it's going to come from, it's going to be stolen from somewhere else. And we put way too much in downtown, I think, to endanger it again. So, you know, that's sort of an additional message. And I can point to this project. You know, Councilman, I think, you know, all of this, the hearing on the Riverfront or Riverwalk project, all that came, wow, out of nowhere. So forgive some of the community that we didn't know that Eduardo was in town and talking to people. And when was officially announced? You know, that there was a meeting? You know, that, you know, and that's why I think you need, you know, obviously a three reading of whatever changes that are being contemplated and get public input into that and have time in and amongst yourself to adequately discuss it. So please don't hold it against Jeff Weber and the Gibson Hotel that he wasn't here last week. I mean, people barely knew of the meeting and the, you know, the agenda. So happy to answer anything else. But I do think the Gibson Hotel has a very viable business plan. Without details, the project cost is under review because I think Jeff, you would say, and I would say, that, you know, some cost has to be trimmed and can be trimmed that make it more commercially viable. Not saying that it isn't viable now, but that can be done. And the key thing is it really is, in a comparative fashion, shovel-ready and it accomplishes other objectives that I think are key for you, us, and the town of Tiffin. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Calnow? Councilman Leopard?
Thank you, Mr. President. Am I wrong, but didn't you seek a partnership with Mr. Hernando last week where you would take over either the condos or the hotel? Because you thought the project was much too large for him?
I do think the project is much too large for him. And I think, yes, that was... Well, it was there, you know, it wasn't flippant, but it was proving the point that you just said. That project is too large, too large for one developer, probably too large for one point in time. And I would be willing to take part in some form or fashion. It wasn't a joke. But that doesn't mean that I think that the project is the right thing or the right thing the way it is fashioned with that magnitude.
I have to assume that you're probably an investor with the Gibson Hotel.
I've offered to be an investor if they desire it.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilman Gillig?
Mr. Weber, if you don't mind, are you thinking of the first floor offering those as retail spaces? Or will that all be part of the hotel complex?
We offer it as retail space.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilman Perry?
We're just a comment. Even if Mr. Hernando's project does go forward, I would hope to see this project go as well. They are different enough where I think they both can survive downtown. And I think, you know, there would be a cool spot for boutique hotel where people, you know, are looking for, you know, a normal room in a hotel or, you know, something more fancy, too. So no matter what, you know, decision is on Mr. Hernando's deal, I hope that you guys still move forward with your project. Would just be my point.
Yeah, one other little factoid I would add that's not unimportant because I think you were trying to figure out the timeline about when the Gibson Hotel group, which I think is called the Tiffin Hotel Group, but named to be determined, I think. Did they know anything about, you know, the Riverfront, Riverwalk project? Yes, they did, but at that time, the hotel was not targeted as a boutique hotel. That is all new information and subsequent. So if you have a hotel at a different sort of price point and, you know, offering, you know, that, I think there's where I would agree with you, Councilman. But now, one apparently is also a boutique hotel. And there certainly isn't a market for two.
Thank you. Anyone else? Go on, you had a question?
I was just going to comment. I remember well the presentation we had a few years ago. It's always been talked about that there was retail space in the bottom. It's always been talked about that there's a restaurant. There's always been talk that there's a bar on top. I remember all of that. There's no surprise to me with what we're hearing again. It's what we heard the first time. So I just wanted to say that.
Thank you for having me and presenting this again. I appreciate the questions. The gentleman spoke this evening, pointing in on exactly what I was actually writing down. The project was announced in 2018. And just to refresh memories, I spoke last week very clearly. We have a required continued progress clause. I think you heard the other project has to do with continued progress also for the continued rebate or tax. So this language, you're hearing a similar language. You're hearing construction costs. We have to reevaluate because everything's changed and it's a malleable situation for everyone out here. In 2019, November, reaching up to that point, prior to that, we submitted our plans to the zoning department, which were declined because we needed variances that Mr. Watson couldn't approve, you know, over the desk. And we had to go to Architectural Review Board. So it's impossible. And all this has been public information and all the newspapers that I have, I have press releases that are all documented where there's never been one ounce of wavering that this project was moving forward. And the process of getting the approval from Architectural Review Board is a long process where we continue to stay in contact with the city. I'm not sure what the term is, Mayor. Or someone from the public request documents?
Public records request.
Public record request or something. I can't verify personally, but through hearsay respectfully, Mr. Calnow, I know that somehow just someone told me from the city that those requests were being made by Mr. Calnow. Again, he's had information. He knows information. When we requested the six-month pause on the agreement, that was because of COVID and strictly because of COVID. However, we started communicating, if you remember, and that's documented as well, many months ago. Hey, by the way, things are progressing. We're moving forward. Here's some good news. Here's some good news. Here's some good news. Until we were prepared thoroughly, meticulously prepared to present to you and answer professional questions that you've asked extremely well, prepared questions to understand the status of this project. So for anyone to say this is a surprise, I'll leave that for you to decide. I am extremely excited that another project is coming into town. And I'm excited about this project. However, there are differences between, you know, bed and breakfast, boutique hotel, standard hotels. And if you've traveled somewhat, you know. Some people hate the bed and breakfast. Some people love them. Some people hate boutique hotels because they're historic buildings and they're, nothing's perfect. The rooms are different sizes throughout the buildings. Some people love the historic nature of boutique hotels or buildings that were restored from 1900s and so on. Now, I personally love architecture and love staying in those type of buildings. The uniqueness of every room. But there's other people that don't, they want the standard room, 300 square feet, give me my outlets for my iPods. Give me all the technology. And they don't want to deal with historic stuff where there's no outlets wherever you need them. And this is the situation now. An amazing project. I'm so excited that this has gone so far. And one of the things, Mayor, if you remember, and David, I don't know if David's here. One of the things we spoke about is get ready for more developers coming in. Okay? This is what we've always wanted. This is what Tiffin wants, is people downtown. The only thing that helps a small business is downtown is people on those sidewalks. My project brings people to downtown, helps people live downtown. This hotel will bring people to downtown. They're going to stay in downtown. That means they're going to park their car and they're going to be walking up and down those sidewalks. So I just want to make those, you know, those points. And the timeframes are the timeframes. There's nothing hidden. And, you know, again, the insinuation that everybody's surprised all of a sudden that I just showed up yesterday with, hopefully, please see me, is inaccurate. And I think the documentation is clear about what's actually happened. I am confused, but Councilman, you nailed it. I heard last week, Mr. Calnow was interested in taking over the hotel. And now he's saying the hotel shouldn't be built or it's competing against this hotel. Just to be clear, the hotel that we're building is going to be the standard, you know, 300-room, 300-square-foot traditional hotel room. It's not going to be architecturally set up like a boutique hotel. So if that was some confusion, I don't want to deter a beautiful project being built. It should definitely be built. And from what I understand, it's 26 rooms. So you have 100 rooms, which is my hotel, and you have 26 rooms. You know, if it was 300 rooms and mine's 300 rooms, then you start thinking, whoa, it's going to be a little bit too much. But I want to address this so-called scarcity mentality, okay? Where there's only this small number of people that want to visit Tiffin. And there's only this number of people that want to spend money in Tiffin. That's a scarcity mentality. Tiffin has so much to offer. There's so many people want to live in Tiffin. There's no housing. There's 10 houses on the market right now if somebody wants to move in. My project is specifically addressing this community's housing needs. And for some reason or some confusion, that I'm building some downtown megaplex of three stories of shopping center, of shops. I mean, that's not the case at all. Okay? We are building apartments, 62 apartments. And yes, the first floor has 10,000 square feet where we have one tenant. It's going to be one restaurant that wants to come in and be on the Riverfront. The housing on the condominium, it's 111 condominium units where it's housing. Where there's people going to be living downtown. That's what small businesses, all the small businesses downtown on Washington want to have is people living downtown. They will walk outside, go to their restaurant, go to their shops, shop, whatever it is. Huge opportunity, but it's housing. Underneath the condo, yes, we're going to have some retail space. It's not going to overwhelm or overshadow the existing historic Main Street. And that's by design. That's by design. The only third point is the hotel, which brings transient people, new people every time that haven't ever visited Tiffin. So after a while, you know, not everyone's going to go into the same, you know, boutique store every single time. But guess what? If you have new people every weekend or new people during the week going into the Gibson Hotel, going into our hotel, they're going to want to go to the Empire. They're going to want to go to the restaurants they've never been to before. And it's going to create a destination of people from an hour to two hours to three hours that have never been to Tiffin. Now there's a Riverfront. Now there's a huge historic Gibson Hotel restored. I mean, people go to historic hotels just to visit them and experience the architecture. So again, this mentality of this is some mega project, there's a lot of confusion being thrown out. Has been thrown out for four years and has been thrown out tonight. All to deter a project that, from the people saying it, at the very first four years ago, was too big, shouldn't happen, to now, sure, I'll invest in it. I'll take part of it. Or it's too big for this guy. I don't know many of you here. Mr. Calnow, I met for 30 minutes walking around one day. I mean, he doesn't know who I am, doesn't know anything about me. How can someone make a statement like that of a character is too big for me? Obviously, the dream seems to be big for him. It might seem to be big for some people in Tiffin. But I believe in this dream. I believe in this vision. And you know what? I'm also willing to fail. And that's what it takes to dream big and potentially fail. But I'm working hard. I've proven that I've been committed to this project. I've proven that I've committed to Tiffin to deliver this project. But I'm here having to prove the value of it or whether it's feasible. The housing study is clear. 440 housing units, and that was two years old. That number's probably 500 or more now, okay? The changes that have happened are going to impact Tiffin because people want to move into small towns. There's no housing for them. There's families that want to move into Tiffin to be closer to their family members that need help. The parents are getting older. They need to move in. They want to bring the family. Now they can work remotely. There's no housing for them. This is going to explode, okay? This is going to be absolutely an amazing opportunity for Tiffin with projects like mine, projects like the Gibson, and the many more that come after that. The number one thing about the development study where I asked David, hey, I said to David, the very first thing I said to David was, you know what? I love what you're doing with the facade programs, but you need urbanization to have a successful downtown. This is what you call urbanization. And it started with investments by Mr. Calnow. The lofts, I know there's other families that have invested in those lofts. There's a year wait to get into those lofts. People want to live downtown. These are needs that are being met. My project and other projects that are coming down or that will be presented in the future. So I think that much has been said. I just want to address something that really disturbed me last week and seems to continue to be out there in the public. Mayor Aaron, when I first met him, never met him before. David Zach the same. But I can tell you, you have a lion of a leader who has been dedicated to this community since he started. And to insinuate that he gave some kind of under-valued deal or some sweet deal, which has been actually quoted, potentially ruins somebody's political career. And I'm not going to stand for that, okay? And those of you who know Mayor Aaron, know his integrity. But it's been questioned. And again, I am embarrassed, okay? This is not Calnowville, okay? This is Tiffin. And if it was, none of you would need to be here. If Mr. Calnow was the sheriff, none of you would need to be here. But thank goodness you have a Mayor Aaron. Thank God you have David Zach. You know why? Because I have never met someone so meticulous as David Zach. And I went through due diligence with both of them, okay? So as I was doing due diligence on Tiffin, guess what they were doing? They would have never allowed me to be here four years later in front of you. And him representing me as a man of integrity, as a man who's committing to a project that nobody knows will actually happen, okay? Nobody knows the gives is going to happen. We're developers. We're willing to take risks and lose everything. You know what? The gains are also there. I'm definitely here to make money. But the project has to matter. Or else it doesn't matter or else it never will get through because the obstacles are so big, the risks are so big. The why has to be strong enough to keep you through coming to a small town like I have, okay? Where this morning, I was up at 4:00 in the morning, had to take two planes, drive an hour and a half. And guess what? I've got business in Miami. I got to drive back to Cleveland after this meeting. I got to go on a 6:00 AM flight and get back to Miami tomorrow, okay? Just to do a project in Tiffin. I didn't come here to be in Tiffin, but I also didn't come here to be slammed and my character to be run through, to be raked through the coals like it's been. This is not the Tiffin I remember. The Tiffin I remember was a welcoming place, okay? And I'm here trying to do my best to help the community. And I'm here trying to do my best to help the community, yes, for a project that makes financial sense. And yes, requires money to do it, requires huge risk, and yes, there's a reward for that. And that's also, I'm worthy of that reward after fighting for four years or five years. And the community will be rewarded with jobs, tax credits, and millions of other, other benefits that we don't have to get into, okay? But it's absolutely ridiculous because you know what's happening? It's preventing other people who are reading articles, observing what I'm going through, from wanting to go through Cowanville's manufactured mafia, okay? That somebody's character has to be destroyed to wanna do business in Tiffin. This is not productive, okay? And I'm not gonna stand here quietly when a, a mayor who stood by me and the insinuations about him, he did due diligence for months on me, okay? David Zach did the same. I'm not gonna stand their reputation. If I go and this project doesn't go, listen, I have other things going on. I don't have to eat from this project, trust me, okay? But I'm not gonna leave, you know, the crumbs or, or rubble after, if, if this doesn't work, to a man who stood by me. So I'm standing by him to make sure, I defend this, this situation and it doesn't go further. He did his due diligence, there was a, as we said, there was an appraisal that was done, third-party appraisal, and he followed the rule to the letter. David Zach, the same, as you know, if you know David, you know how meticulous he is about every single detail, did the same thing in due diligence with me, my previous projects, things that I've done, all the things that I, and the fact that I can get this done. And it's not too big for me, okay? If anybody's questioning that. So with that said, I think I've said quite enough. Mayor, for whatever it's worth, you are a man of integrity, and I know this community is very, very proud of you. And I'm, I appreciate your standing by, and I know you and David Zach have been criticized without the proper merits to be criticized, okay? For you just believing in this community and giving of yourself in every way to get this community to be where I, I'm even interested in doing a project. Or that we're even having Gibson here that wants to do a project. That's progress, okay? But if this community stands for this ridiculous character assassination, it only starts here, you're going in the wrong direction. So I'm sorry for my admonishment, but I just wanna share that with you, that this has to change if Tiffin wants a bigger future. Because Tiffin is set and teed up for a great future. So if you wanna, you know, yell at me because I believe in Tiffin and I'm doing a bigger project than, than other people think I can do, I don't care what people think, okay? I'm here to do what I said I'm gonna do, and I'm four years later still standing in front of you. So again, I hope I've answered questions or modified some things that, again, in error maybe of, of what the hotel's gonna be. But if there's no competition with Gibson, Gibson Hotel, again, amazing, to me, I think the more, the better. And the more people coming downtown is gonna help the small businesses that some people express concern about. Uh, so there shouldn't be any issue with preventing or, or competing with price points and things like that if that helps your project. If there's any questions for me about anything that, you know, there was articles written or anything else from last week, I'm open to answering any questions.
Councilman Perry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, Mr. Hernando, you went through the process before, right? So you know kinda how the reading rule goes, right? How, you know, we like to do some ample time between readings. Um, my question, I guess, is why wasn't your request into the city so we could have read it at three consecutive readings? Where we have to, you know, make special meetings and stuff like that?
I haven't been in, Tiffin just opened, the state of Ohio just opened, I think less than two weeks ago. We had, we had our first meeting in, in person since March tenth of twenty twenty, when I was actually here in town, prepared to move forward with the project. So based on timing, based on meetings, you know, obviously there's a lot going on, we, we set up our meeting to say, hey, here's where we are at this point. Uh, we are ready to move forward, but guess what? We have a contract that's, that's got some dates in it. So we need to, we need to legally, you know, Brent's in the meetings, Brent's in emails, Brent is, is an amazing man who's kept everything kind of going for everybody and for this community, okay? Uh, so the, the rush for the timing, you know, forgive me, you know, I'm not into that detail of the legal process of Tiffin, you know? I'm just here doing my project. So if there was a timing missing or now we're rushing to get it done, I mean, that should have been probably handled a little better. But by no means is this a surprise. And by no means has there not been communication in general for many months up to now.
My, my worry is that I feel like we're almost setting a bad precedent. You know, if we're jumping all through all these hoops for, for you and your project like this, what are we supposed to tell the next guy that says, hey, uh, my deadline's about to come up? Can we just do the three meetings like you did for Mr. Hernando and his project? So from a, from a law perspective, that's, that's really the one thing that bothers me is, you know, like we're trying to figure out a way to, you know, quote unquote cram these meetings in, and that's not the, the purpose of this. So, um, and, and one way I feel like, you know, deadlines have consequences. So now I have to miss time for my family to come to a special meeting, which I'm willing to do because I love Tiffin. But now I have to, you know, come to a meeting on Wednesday and next Monday. Like I said, more than willing to do it, that's, that's the job I signed up for. But I also really believe that, you know, missing deadlines should have some consequences as well.
Just to address your, your point respectfully, you're setting precedence is for as many projects as, as it needs, okay? In the end, you represent the community and you represent the community's best interest. You believe in this project and this, so this requires three twenty-four-hour-a-day meetings because it's so special, that's your decision. You're voting, you're, you're here, hearing the information, you're gathering information, you have the inside track and everything. There's gonna be other situations with other projects, whether it's Gibson or anybody else, that you run into potential legal timeframes or dates. So you should be prepared for that, you know? This is, this is a, a, you know, being in this situation, you're dealing with real life, okay? So deadlines come up, uh, you're gonna have to vote and say, hey, we really want this project, you vote for it, you voted last week to say, we wanna move forward, we wanna continue this. So you're going out of your way to make sure it continues, you know? I'm here to basically say, I wanna continue. Humbly, I'm here to answer every, every question you have to, to feel comfortable, okay? I've made myself present and available to you to be able to answer you directly, not through phones or anything else, but be here, okay? But, you know, you having projects in the future is, is gonna happen, right? How those projects, you know, move through the, the legal process is a traditional, you know, is a way that is, is a process that's gonna take some time, it's not gonna be perfect, you know? Where you're gonna have to, gosh, we have the situation, we need to, uh, uh, do something to, to make sure this project continues forward in, in a favor of Tiffin. You're not doing me a favor, okay? That's the most important thing, be pure with your, your why, okay? Is this right for Tiffin? That's all that has to be answered. Is this right for Tiffin? Is the Gibson right for Tiffin? To me, it's a yes across the board, okay? And I hope that helps in, in kind of a way, I know, listen, we're all, we all have family, we all have obligations. And sometimes the noise of life distracts us from our real priorities, which are our children, you know, being home for dinner. I understand completely, okay? And I thank you for, for taking the time because I, I think the community thanks you for taking the time, right? Not everyone's willing to stand here and, and sometimes be criticized because you're a public official. Oh, I hate that decision and they, and then you, you're just helping out, right? And you get criticized. So, you know, you're, you're, you're in a risky position too, and it's commendable. But as far as legal, obviously you have Brent, who's an amazing guy to protect the city. Uh, you should expect things to, to, to be moving in general in this environment.
Councilman Boyle.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so ju- just a couple of points, especially the one that Councilman Perry raised. So, so you said that you weren't able to submit the extension to us because Ohio just opened. But, I mean, we were still holding regular meetings virtually. I actually believe that's how your last request came through for an extension. And then additionally, I think that you, you're, you've mentioned a lot about people stating there wasn't communication at a certain time and that, you know, there was wavering or indication of you wavering. I mean, you said last week that you even thought at one point the project was dead, which it was in response to one of Councilman Perry's questions to you. So I think there, there truly was a time period, whether it was as of recent or not, but during COVID that you thought the project was dead. So I don't think that there was such an open line of communication as you're stating. To be honest, I'm not an expert in development, I'm, I'm all for, as I told you last week, I'm all for development happening in Tiffin and the success of Tiffin. But I guess what concerns me is there's multiple individuals who have invested in Tiffin, have, you know, have invested in the community and their time and money, who are in this industry and have raised a lot of concerns, whether different or similar to each other. And it, it just raises a lot of red flags to me personally. So I just more wanna make that comment, not so much a comment directed towards you for that, but just to, to counsel in general, so, thank you.
Councilman Perkins.
Overall, this is positive, I think is what's funny about this. Um, we have people fighting to develop in Tiffin. When's the last time that happened? So, thanks Mayor Moss. It's a great thing and I will sit through these meetings forever. If we have investors, um, we have entrepreneurs that wanna come into the city and fight over competition and how to make a living and how to improve the city. I'm all for it. I think both projects are fantastic, I think they're completely different, but I'm not an expert in hotels. You know, I, I'm all for both of them, I don't think we're giving anyone a free ride, I don't think we're trying to help out anyone more than what they should probably get. I think a twelve-to-fourteen-month extension on the contract is ve- very realistic with COVID, I really do. And it'd be no different if Cowan was standing up here, I'd feel the exact same way. Uh, it doesn't matter who it is, I don't care if it's someone who is born and raised in Tiffin or someone from Brazil that comes up here and wants to invest in this community. That's what it's all about, it's equal opportunity, you know? Come here, we'll welcome you, help improve our city. So that, that's my stance on all this. If you wanna fight over comp, or, you know, the same industry and competition, I love it, go at it, let's see who wins. I mean, that's what it's all about, that's capitalism at its finest. So, you know, grow, please, help us grow, everybody.
Good point.
Yeah.
Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have four items, but I don't wanna infringe on Mr. Hernando's five minutes, so I can wait till the first reading on this and bring them up.
Okay, well, you don't have a question for him about this, okay?
More or less, but I mean.
Go for it, yeah.
Yeah.
What's your question?
Gonna say minor, but it's not minor. I've been in contact with Presbyterian Church via telephone call or email, I just got another one today, and I don't have permission to share this. Their concern is parking spots with your development. Uh, they're talking about their election polling place, they have drive-through non-food pantry, they have meetings, et cetera, et cetera, elderly parishionership, and they're just concerned about losing parking spots. And I would hope you would be a good neighbor and take that into consideration, so I wanted to make you aware of that. If you haven't heard about that. If you haven't heard about that, you know, call me or email me and I'll be glad to share a little more information. That was item one.
Let me address that?
Oh, yes, sir, please.
Robert, Dean Robert Olson, I'm not sure if you know him, from the community, been here forever. He was my dean at Hoddleburg, and we have extremely close relationship from those days, uh, going back, I mean, from the very beginning, almost three years ago. We would have breakfast and get together in time I'm here and he shared, he's a member of that, he's a parishioner, and he expressed the parking issue. And I've already, you know, said, we're gonna allow parking and we're gonna work with the church to make sure they have accommodations for us. Just so you feel more comfortable about, as you said, good citizen. I mean, we're here to become, to bring a project that's gonna help the community, bring jobs, bring economic development, help the existing businesses downtown prosper, help new businesses come in, and also, however we can help, we will.
Okay, according to one of the four I spoke with, they said a year ago, they met with you, I believe, via Zoom, and it sounded like, uh, no input from you as far as parking.
I've never met with anybody on Zoom.
Okay. Okay, that was item one. Item two, page six of something that we got under assignability of agreement. It says the buyer may transfer or assign rights and obligations at the buyer's sole discretion. I'm no legalese person, but if Mr. Hernando gets sick or, and he wants to delegate this project to someone else, I guess I can ask the law director or, or ask Mr. Hernando. Shouldn't City Tiffin have some input on who you reassign this project to if and when that ever happens in the next four or five years?
Usually, traditionally, contracts for purchase will say, you know, your name and or assigned. So you might wanna sign it into a trust, or you wanna sign the purchase agreement into some other form of legal entity or so on. So the assigned language is basically a traditional acceptable process. Now, as a developer, there's different ways to make money in projects. You could, there's developers, there's different levels of making money. So just to make it short, basically, you can take a piece of farmland, you can, you can do all the, all the horizontal, you know, with the plumbing in, put the roads in. There's developers that just go from land and just create the, they get the approvals, they invest in the, in the process of getting all the plumbing in and electrical in. Then they assign the projects to a company that comes in and builds the home. So there's three or four or five different layers of development and processes where assignments are, are made. But remember, the assignments go with the actual entitlement, okay? So somebody can't come in and then change anything that's already been approved, or else they'd have to start over and get new approvals, you see? So the assignment shouldn't be, I don't wanna invalidate your concern, but the assignment clause or information or language shouldn't create fear in you. Because if there's an assignment, it's either for personal purposes or the assignment, in fact, the, the assignee who gets the, the contract has to abide by all the, all the legal, uh, the agreements, the timing, and everything else.
Okay, thank you. That was item two. Item three, looking over something I don't have in front of me, it just struck me, I saw it at least six, if not eight times, I know it's part of the language. But it talked about lot six, so many acres and the adjacent properties. Lot four and acreage and adjacent properties. I guess I'm confused on what the adjacent properties are. Does that mean Tiffin Riverfront could take over Market Twenty-two, Red Raven Tattoo, Presbyterian Church, Taxi Cab, Old Fort Bank? If those five are adjacent to your two.
No.
No, it's very specific to, it's lot four and five, I think, right Brent? And then lot six is, yes, lot five and six and lot four are all separate parcels, but it only includes those specific lots.
If, if I could, if I could, if I could explain, it's, this is, only involves city-owned property. So we can't contractually obligate and or sell private property that was referred to just a minute ago. Lot four is a defined parking lot that the city owns, um, particular properties between Market and Perry Street. Lot six and the adjacent property is the property that the city owns, which lot six is a parking lot that goes down to the river. But then there's also property that is not technically part of lot six, but it, it, it is adjacent to the river that the city owns. And so that is a, kind of a short name for that property. We have ALTA surveys that have been prepared. That is a type of a survey that the local surveying firm prepared for, really not for this particular project, but as we were trying to, the city was trying to find someone to develop these properties, we had an ALTA survey. So it could be applied to anyone. So, and they have defined acreages that are referenced in the documents that you're referring to.
That was three of four, and I couldn't, can't put my fingers on four. So we'll leave it at that, so thank you for your time.
Anybody else have any questions?
Um, I just wanna make a comment to follow up with Councilman Perkins said, thirty-five years ago, if someone would have come to us with either one of these two projects. if someone would have come to us with either one of these two projects, the community just would have been, wow. They wouldn't have believed it was going, you know, they just wouldn't have believed it because nobody was going to do it 35 years ago. But, Mr. Calnow, you've had a lot to do with the turnaround in this community. Mr. Felton, you've had a lot to do with the turnaround in this community. There have been other people that have been involved in that turnaround. It's a different community today than it was 35 years ago. And the fact that we have these two projects standing before us who want to invest in our community is proof of that. So it is my hope, and I'm praying for this, that both these projects move forward, because I see it as just a huge plus for our community. And I hope, and I agree with a lot what you said, Eduardo, I believe that, you know, our pie isn't shrinking, it's getting bigger. And I think there's an opportunity here for developments like these. So, you know, I want to thank, I want to thank Mr. Weber, Mr. Calnow, Eduardo, Mr. Hernando, for your commitment to the community and what this, what this means to all of us. It's just, I mean, it's, and, you know, Mayor, and I appreciate the job you're doing, and all of you on council. So I just, I just felt compelled to say that because it is a different environment today. And when you, this is, this is when you know things turn around. When you have somebody who's willing to invest their capital in your, in your community and your ideas, then you know that you're moving in a positive direction, because without that, nothing changes. Nothing changes.
And I can say, just to, things have gone a little bit harsh, I'd say, to be mild, but I will say, I came here to be part of Hoddleburg's Business School and just be close to Hoddleburg in some way and give back. When I saw Empire, when I saw Renaissance, I met Mr. Calnow, walked around Frost Parkway, okay? He showed me some of the things he was doing. I saw the study that was spent, $150,000, the council invested it. These were all seeds that were planted, okay? And now this council, compared to what the council's different from 2018, that council planted seeds, and now you're the ones farming it, okay? It'll be a metaphor of the community, and seeing us both up here talking about amazing opportunities for Tiffin. But it was contributions of Mr. Calnow, specifically his vision, his money in Empire and other things that were going on downtown. The other owners of the facade, you know, doing facades and restorations of buildings, the investors in the lofts, all of this, believe me, I wouldn't have been here. It was all of their work, sweat, and their vision of downtown Tiffin, okay? Starting with councils, starting with the mayor, starting with everyone's small or large contribution that has me here, okay? All that contributed, and I'm grateful, okay? I am, because I'm very happy to be here. And I'm happy to have to get on a plane and be here having a conversation with you, trust me, okay? It's worth it, it's worth my time, because my why is big enough, to see this community continue to prosper and be successful. So for that, thank you for your comments, and, you know, I hope there's many more of us down the road.
You too. Thank you.
Mayor. Yeah, and I don't have a question, I just have a comment. You know, I want to kind of recap, since a lot of council, you know, is pretty new. They haven't been around. In fact, Steve, you're about the only one that can relate with us. I remember being on city council before I was mayor for four years, and I think all we talked about those four years, and of course, this is dumbing it down a bit, I think alls we talked about were sewers and where we were making cuts in the budget because we had no money, and every year we were fighting over who was getting laid off or what park programs we were shuttering and not going to happen. And I still remember in late 2010, 2011, the year I ended up running for mayor, I had, I still had no intentions of running. I was searching high and low, trying to find someone who would run for mayor that year, because I was fully planning to run for reelection to council, fully planning to. And what finally brought things to a head was we were in a very argumentative council meeting about layoffs and other things with me, yourself, Councilman Galoppo, Councilman Klein. My predecessor slammed his fist on the table and said, "Economic development is not my job." And that is what set me over the edge and said, "I'm going to run for mayor. I'm not running for reelection." And low and behold, I won. It was a close election, and I'm glad I did. Things have gotten so much better in this community. I remember this guy, T-Sup, Psydeck at the time, coming to me and asking me, "What is your vision for the Tiffin?" And I said, "I dream of the day that we're no longer fighting in city council meetings about who we're laying off and what we're cutting, but instead that we're up there fighting and arguing over which development we choose or which one's the best for Tiffin." And here we are. Now, maybe after all these fireworks, I may almost be second guessing that, I'm not. But that's what I told him, and hey, we're finally here, but look at where we've come in the last several years. Tiffin has come so far, so much good has happened. We have presided over two of the largest three unencumbered surpluses in city budgets history. In the 10 years, I don't think we've ever had a fight or a discussion even over who we're laying off or any of that. And we've come so far, so we can't let things like this derail us. I am a little sickened by all of the innuendo, personal attacks, et cetera, that are, that are happening with this. I think that's really got to stop. We got to focus on the projects at hand. But at the end of the day, we have come so far. Let's, I think each one of you have a decision to make on this project in the next couple of weeks, and I just hope you vote your conscience, vote what you think is best for Tiffin. And at the end of the day, I like Rich, hope that both projects can go forward. And I hope we look back at this as the day that growth just exploded. But we've come a long way. Don't let things like this get to us, tear us apart. We've got a lot ahead of us yet.
Very good. Anyone else? Any other brave souls out there? Okay. We'll move on to motions. Any motions? Seeing done, we're under resolutions.
Resolution number 20 dash, 21-11, introduced by Daniel Perry. Resolution approving the appointment of Susan E. Payne to serve a term on the Julia M. Weller Commission from the passage of this resolution until December 31st, 2023.
This is the first and only reading of Resolution 21-11. Counselor Perry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask for passage of Resolution 21-11.
We have a motion for passage of Resolution 21-11. Your second, Counselor Perkins.
I'd like to second, please.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, very quickly, I just really want to thank Eloise Granata, who served on this board. That's who Susan Payne is taking the place of, and Eloise has had to step down due to health issues, but she really served this board very well for a long period of time, helping underprivileged individuals in the community. So just a big thank you to Eloise and praying for, for better health for her.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'll ask the clerk to call the vote, please, on the passage.
Councilman Gillig.
Yes.
Yana Juno.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
And Boyle.
Yes.
Resolution 21-11 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance number 21-44, introduced by Steve Leopard. Ordinance amending the 2021 budget ordinance number 21-11 to appropriate $96,968 into the sewer maintenance budget for emergency sewer repairs.
This is the third reading of ordinance 21-44. Oh, Counselor Leopard.
Thank you. I would ask for a passage of ordinance number 21-44.
Thank you. We have a motion for passage of ordinance 21-44. Is there a second? Counselor Gillig.
I'd like to second the motion, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second for passage. Is there any discussion? Counselor Leopard.
Thank you, Mr. President. If you all remember, this was in a very short period of time, we had some major catastrophes on Bryden Road and Ann Street, and that's, that's what this ordinance is all about.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ask the clerk to call the vote on the passage, please.
Councilman Gillig.
Yes.
Yana Juno.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
And Boyle.
Yes.
Ordinance 21-44 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance number 21-45, introduced by Ben Gillig. Ordinance adopting a tax budget for fiscal year 2022. Attached here to is a part hereof in directing the Director of Finance to deliver the budget to the Seneca County Auditor Honor of the Floor before July 20th, 2021, and declaring an emergency.
This is the second reading of ordinance 21-45.
Ordinance number 21-47, introduced by Ben Gillig. Ordinance amending the 2021 budget ordinance number 21-11 to appropriate $5,000 into the Women Victim Assistance Budget for Services to Victims in Tiffin Fostoria Municipal Court Cases.
This is the second reading of ordinance 21-47.
Ordinance number 21-50, introduced by Daniel Perry. Ordinance approving the mayor's appointment of Robert W. Chappell as Fire Chief of the Tiffin Fire Rescue Division and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of ordinance 21-50. Counselor Perry.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask council to forego our three reading rule and ask for immediate passage of ordinance 21-50.
We have a motion to suspend council's three reading rule and the immediate passage of ordinance 21-50. Is there a second, Counselor, Counselor woman Yana Juno?
I'll second, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Four out of the next seven ordinance that we're talking about are declaring an emergency. And if interim chief Chappell is already getting the chief's pay, what is emergency? Why can't this wait another 10 weeks? Take place.
Do you want to answer that? I think it's preferred that he knows for certain that he's beginning. I mean, we want to hire him and then wait 30 days to swear him in for his promotion? I just, I don't see the reason to it. I know you're trying to stick up for your constituents that call you, but there's just absolutely no good reason not to make this an emergency and get him hired tonight. I can't think of any good reason why not to.
He's our man, we want him.
Yeah.
Simple as that.
Yeah, he's, he's going to make a great chief.
Okay, well, I'm just hoping we explain each and every one of these.
Okay, you know, you're just trying to do your job. Anybody else? Okay, we have a, we have a motion and a second. No other discussion. I'll ask the clerk to call the vote on the suspension, please.
Counselor Gillig.
Yes.
Yana Juno.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
And Boyle.
Yes.
Emergency passes with a vote of seven to zero. We'll now vote on the emergency.
Counselor Gillig.
Yes.
Yana Juno.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
And Boyle.
Yes.
Emergency passes with a vote of seven to zero. We'll now vote on the passage.
Counselor Gillig.
Yes.
Yana Juno.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
And Boyle.
Yes.
Ordinance 21-50 passes with a vote of seven to zero. Congratulations, Chief Chappell.
And I'll sign the ordinance as long as you promise to never give that long of a presentation.
I'll second, Mr. President. Mr. Mayor, there was so much fascinating history.
You're outvoted, Ben.
Ordinance number 21-51, introduced by Steve Leopard. Ordinance authorizing and directing the city administrator to enter into an agreement with a professional design firm for preparation of the engineering and design for the Riverview Estates Sewer Replacement Project.
This is the first reading of ordinance 21-51.
Ordinance number 21-52, introduced by Steve Leopard. Ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept a permanent easement from LSCS Incorporated or current property owner at 60 Heritage Drive for storm sewer purposes and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of ordinance 21-52.
Ordinance number 21-53, introduced by Steve Leopard. Ordinance authorizing city administrator to prepare plans and specifications, advertise for and receive bids, and recommend and execute a contract for constructing decorative stamped concrete in downtown Tiffin and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of ordinance 21-53.
Ordinance number 21-54, introduced by Ben Gillig. Ordinance amending 2021 budget ordinance number 21-11 to return $286,295.26 from the Jefferson Street, Streetscape Fund to the General Fund.
This is the first reading of ordinance 21-54. Counselor Gillig.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to ask for suspension of council's three reading rule and immediate passage of ordinance 21-54, please.
We have a motion to suspend council's three reading rule and immediate passage of ordinance 21-54. Is there a second? Counselor Leopard.
I'll second the motion, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, and is there any discussion? Counselor Gillig.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This is reimbursement from a grant. If I made my notes correct, Finance Director Kaufman, so we're just returning that money to the General Fund as soon as possible.
Thank you. Anything else? I'll ask the clerk to call the vote on the suspension, please.
Counselor Gillig.
Yes.
Yana Juno.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
We will now vote on the passage of ordinance 21-54.
Counselor Gillig.
Yes.
Yana Juno.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
And Boyle.
Yes.
Ordinance 21-54 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance number 21-55, introduced by Steve Leopard. Ordinance approving a second addendum to our real estate purchase agreement with Tiffin Riverfront Development LLC to sell city real property under certain terms and conditions and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of ordinance 21-55.
Ordinance number 21-56, introduced by Ben Gillig. Ordinance amending 2021 budget ordinance number 21-11 to appropriate a $23,194.60 transfer from the General Fund to the Fairlane US Route 224 Market Street Fund to complete the sale of the 2021 street improvement notes.
This is the first reading of ordinance 21-56. Counselor Gillig.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to ask for suspension of council's three reading rule and immediate passage of ordinance 21-56.
We have a motion to suspend council's three reading rule and the immediate passage of ordinance 21-56. Is there a second? Counselor woman Boyle.
I'll second, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Counselor Gillig.
May I ask, Mr. Mayor or Kathy, could you give the reason for the suspension? I wrote down notes, and three hours later, they don't make any sense to me.
Did you throw out a pitch too in between? We have, we have a certain amount of time, we have to close on the note. So this is to complete the closure of the note. So I don't think we want to wait, because I don't think our interest rate's going to be any lower than it is, so.
Makes perfect sense. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone else? Ask the clerk to call the vote on the suspension, please.
Counselor Gillig.
Yes.
Yana Juno.
Yes. Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
And Boyle.
Yes.
Ordinance 21-56 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
That concludes the ordinance, Mr. President.
Thank you. That's the end of our agenda. Is there anything for the good of the order? Councilman Perry.
Just want to go back to ordinance 21-55 just for a second. If I could lean on the law director, read through mostly everything, just for the public's benefit, if we could note some maybe key dates and stipulations within the ordinance that, you know, Mr. Hernando has to hit for the project to move forward. I think that would be beneficial for the people at home.
You'd like me to kind of go through the ordinance.
Just more or less get the highlights, yeah. Cliff notes.
Yeah, the cliff notes. And the provisions in the ordinance, they are a result of the conversation that we had, three hour conversation we had at the last meeting. Three and a half. Excuse me. Don't take that last half hour. But you recall based on the presentation and the questions that you had, there appeared to be kind of a different timing structure of the project. And that's what ultimately this ordinance is about, is there was a request for additional time and there seemed to be some agreement to allow for that. However, I understood that there was also a desire to hold the developer to a more specific deadlines throughout the process. And he even outlined some deadlines and some timeframes. And so those things were incorporated into the ordinance with some input from the administration too, based on what we've heard in that public meeting and similar presentation at a meeting to the mayor and the city administration. The first concept of the ordinance is that really this is a sale of two separate properties. Originally, as projected, the project would be sold altogether so that the project could be developed. But as you've heard the presentation, there are two different lenders, there are two different purposes of the lot, there are two different time schedules for the construction. So they're on different paths. So the first timeframe is the city should receive a written loan commitment that the buyer has from a responsible lender for the purchase and construction of the project for Lot 6 and adjacent property, which is the behind, or on Monroe Street down to the river, behind the Presbyterian Church in Kears, that property. That's where I understand that the hotel will be constructed. And so in the ordinance, there is the date that the written loan commitment would be received by the city by November 1st, 2022. I'm sorry, 2021. There was a typographical error earlier in my draft. So this year, November 1st, 2021, the city would receive a written loan commitment. Then also with carrying on with Lot 6, that the actual sale of that lot would close on or before February 28th, 2022. Again, we're kind of doing a chronology of dates. The purchase price also for that would be $145,000, which is the same purchase price that was contained in the appraisal that the city received back approximately 2018. The post-closing dates for starting construction on Lot 6 is June 30th, 2022. So again, we're kind of moving forward with dates and the completion of the construction is June 30th, 2023, a year later. Why those dates are important is that in the initial agreement and continuing with the agreement, that if construction does not start by that June 30th, 2022 date, then the city would have the right to purchase the property back for the same purchase price. If the property and the project is not completed by June 30th, 2023, then the city may purchase that property back, but it may look different. So the language in the agreement is that the property would be appraised and the city could then purchase the property back at that time. Or it could assign its interest, its rights to purchase that property to some other party to do that in our complete discretion. And I think those provisions address the concerns that what if the project doesn't, isn't completed, doesn't happen? This is on city property, there's certain expectations for particular improvements that we negotiated and so if that doesn't happen, we should have some process to try to protect the public's interest. So that deals with Lot 6. Lot 4, which is the lot between Perry and Market, has a little formerly Leadership Park, I think wanted to develop there. It's the area where the city fixed, put up a new river wall. That is Lot 4. And the dates for Lot 4, and this is where the developer has indicated the condominium would be built, and Lot 4, the dates for that process begins with a written loan commitment issued to the city by February 28th, 2022. Then the closing for that, for Lot 4 is June, let me just verify that I've got it, is February, the sale will close February 28th, 2023 for a purchase price of $122,000. And what I recall in the discussion is that the condominium project may not move forward until after the hotel project is started and then he can start marketing the project, the condominium, pre-sell some of the units. And then by February 28th, 2023, he should know whether he is going to be able to purchase the property and move forward. And moving forward with the next date, that the, starting the construction would take place June 30th of 2023 and that the completion of construction would be September 30th, 2024. And again, those dates line up with the developer's presentation about the amount of time needed for construction for the condominium project. All of these dates, if they don't, if they're not met, then that may mean that either the entire project, if it's the first lot or for Lot 4, it could be null and void. So if it did not meet the deadlines, then the city would not have the obligation to move forward with the sale of the property. Or if it's post-closing, again, we have certain rights to purchase the property back. So it's trying to meet the expectations, I think, of council, which you seem to suggest in the meeting a week ago, but also using some of the developers' dates that I believe you felt were reasonable based on what I heard the discussion. And I prepared this with input from all of you in the meeting and the mayor. So it is a document that is subject to your review and comment. I did also incorporate these dates that are in the ordinance, also in the second addendum, which you see. It's on the city website, it's a public document. It can be changed if council so desires as part of the reading process. There's another reading this week and during your public meetings, you can have discussion like now or later, whether you feel that those terms are reasonable and appropriate for the second addendum. Are there any questions about the dates, the timelines? Are there any desire to discuss or change any of the dates?
Thank you for explaining that.
Okay, go ahead, Councilman Leopard.
I guess I have just one item that I don't know if we should even discuss or not, but what happens if the Delta strain of COVID-19 hits and sets us back again?
What if we get hit by a meteor?
Mr. President, I guess one thing I can tell from a legal standpoint, either party can initiate a discussion to renegotiate the terms of the transaction like you're doing here and like you did before. Is there additional time based on circumstances? So that's always a possibility. But I also, I forgot to indicate one also obligation. It was based on, Councilman Leopard suggested and I believe agreed, that it would be appropriate for the developer to come to city council on a every 90-day basis to make a presentation on the progress and answer any questions that you may have. So that obligation begins October 1st, 90 days from approximately now and every 90 days thereafter until the project is complete.
Okay. Good. Mayor.
Yeah, the only thing I'd add, Councilman Leopard, is I guess from our standpoint with the city and to kind of look at Eduardo too, you know, obviously it sounds like, at least based off of conversations, that council's amenable to granting an extension. We would certainly hope that you continue to work very diligently and even pick up the pace more because I think if, unless there is something completely out of the box like what Councilman Leopard has alluded to, I can't imagine that we'll grant another extension unless there, you know, God forbid, all hell breaks loose again and the country shut down. I think we're to the point now that we've come out of this and I think while we're amenable to it now, we have to put confidence in you that you're going to put the pedal to the metal and get her done. So that's, I guess, what I would say to Councilman Leopard's comments really with the potential extension, but I don't think we need to sit here and worry now about all of the what-ifs because we will be here till tomorrow.
Anything else? Anything else for the good of the order? Okay, thanks everybody for your patience. Mr. Weber, thanks for your update. We really appreciate it. Eduardo, thank you for being here with us again. That's it. No other comments. God bless all of you. Good night. We stand adjourned.
Council members, if you'll stay to get your announcements.
Yeah.